Are you ready? It's still 6:29. Are you ready? All right, I'd like to call the March 1st meeting to order and have Mr. Dietz lead the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Zemble, can you call the roll?
Mr. Kuzick.
President.
Mr. Dietz.
Here.
Mrs. Farrows absent. Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Kraft.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Ms. Rinsky.
Here.
All present except Mrs. Farrows.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes, February 15th meeting.
Motion to approve by acclamation, Mr. President.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Courtesy of the floor, I have nobody that's signed in tonight. Does anybody like to address counsel on any matter? Okay. Next on the agenda is the Executive's Report. Mr. McCord, do you have anything for us tonight?
Very briefly, sir.
Okay.
Soon after taking office, I directed the acting sheriff, Mr. Johnston and Charles, when he finally arrived from New York, to begin to prepare a pilot program for the stationing of sheriff's deputies at Gracdale. It's something that I had thought about coming into office, and then administrators at Gracdale had an incident there. It was an ongoing incident that they reached out for assistance, and at that time, we began to ramp up our program so that we could have sheriffs provision that at Gracdale. We're going to do that, it starts Monday, on a much quicker timeline than might normally be accomplished. One of the reasons that we have hastened to get this done, in addition to this other incident that I referred to you, the other night, there was an allegation that, and I want to stress that when I'm talking about this, I'm talking about in terms of alleged incident. One of our staff members was allegedly threatened by her significant other or paramour with very serious bodily injury. That person never came to Gracdale. Upper Nazareth Police were on the scene immediately. Upper Nazareth Police escorted our shift change in the parking lot, which we are very grateful to Upper Nazareth for doing so. And the facility was on lockdown until the alleged paramour of our employee was located in Slatington, where apparently he never moved from, and was apprehended. I have no official report on what dependency of any potential illegal action is, but I bring that to your attention. One, because I think I need to tell you about it, but two, this is precisely why we're starting this pilot project for guarding at Gracdale. There'll be a guard at a station as you enter the facility in the tower, and I believe there'll be another deputy sheriff monitoring the cameras in another room, so that we'll have the facility covered. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. McCord? Mr. Dietz?
So, in regards to the prison, we had the death and the illnesses over here, did we figure out what it was?
I don't have a report on...
Are you even allowed to say?
Well, there is some question about that. I think that the general rule of thumb at law is that people don't have privacy rights, but out of...
But the families.
Out of an abundance of respect for the loss that the family suffered, I'm just not talking in public about what he died from, but it wasn't flu.
But it's not something that anyone else should be concerned of, you know, transmittive or...
Or communicable.
There was no communicable disease involved in the passing of the young man.
Okay.
Mr. Heckman?
Just since you mentioned Gracdale, and I honestly know, I applaud lots of representatives looking for sheriff, you know, looking out there.
I'm sorry, do we have, are you gonna look at overall security out of Gracdale? Because I know many years ago, a few of these incidents occurred, and administrations, I don't, I took them seriously, but nothing ever happened, fortunately. But especially with the parking and the shift changes, as you say, at times, I mean, we should maybe even consider a camera or some type of surveillance of our parking lots. Just something to throw out there.
There are 40 cameras at Gracdale now.
Oh.
Yeah, there's cameras all over the place.
And one of the things that has been a problem before this was, there's roughly 47 doors in Gracdale that access out. Those doors have been secured, and we have increased the number of swipe locations, including in the administration office, which previous to this recent incident, you could just walk right in there in the administration, and that is now a secure area as well.
Great.
And much of the credit for that, the quick action on those items, goes to Mr. Dirk.
Anybody else have a question for Mr. McCord? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next thing on the agenda is old business. We have a public hearing, an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Northampton County Ordinance Number 526-2010," also known as the Northampton County Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 54 Fund Balance Policy Ordinance. It was introduced by Mr. Warner and Ms. Fargo-Hefner, February 15th meeting, and a public hearing, debate and possible vote will be held at this meeting. We also had a meeting, a quite a lengthy meeting, two days ago on this same matter. So at this moment, I'd like to ask if anybody from the public would like to have questions or any comments on this. Seeing none, is anybody from council who would like to further comment on this entire thing? Mr. Kuzick?
Just, you know, to repeat some of the things I said back on Tuesday, there are some good things in here, specifically eliminating the definition of what an emergency is. I think that there should be some flexibility there. And then the other piece is allowing a budget amendment, or the budget amendment process, to facilitate the use of money from the stabilization fund, because ultimately, a budget amendment is an ordinance, and it does require advertising, so that would be a good thing. But ultimately, where I have a problem is if we go to item five, and that would be both numbers two and then new number four. In item two, it says the suggested balance of the fiscal stabilization fund is recommended. Now, I know that those are accounting standards, but I don't think it's a bad thing that we codified those as part of our financial stabilization fund. And then the other part is, it was item six, it's item four, and that's where it says the financial stabilization fund should not be considered to be available funds during the annual budget. So I'm worried there that, you know, that opens up the door for them to be available. Right now, they cannot be, but what we're changing this to is that they should not be. So what that tells me is, is that potentially during the budget process, that the financial stabilization funds could be available as part of the annual budget. So for those, you know, two reasons, I will be voting no for this. I could take the time to suggest an amendment, but I'm not sure I would have the votes, but...
Well, I would second that if you wanted to try it.
Okay, so let me make the amendment, and then if we can vote on it. So my proposed amendment to the ordinance would be this. If we go to section five, number two, I would like to remove the word "suggested," and would also like to remove "is recommended to," and restore the will. And then on old item six or new item four, I would like to replace "should not" with "shall." So those would be my recommendations or my proposed amendments to the ordinance.
We have a motion and a second for an amendment to this ordinance. I guess we'll open that up to discussion.
Question, Mr. Chairman.
Dietz was the second.
Could you please re, um, number four, could you restate number four?
Sure, for num, right, for item, it's new item four, it was struck from six, and I would, where it has "should not," I would strike that and replace it with "shall." So the financial stabilization fund shall be considered in whole or in part as available funds. Wait, "shall," I'm sorry, it should be "shall not" be considered, not "shall." So strike "should" and should be "shall not."
I have another question.
You're...
With the amendment, questions for the solicitor. With the amendment, would that change the whole of everything that we're doing here?
I have a similar question, too. Does that make it...
So we're doing this because we're not in compliance with the home charter rule, correct?
Now we're stating that he has to do something.
So what does that do to the demographics, and do we have enough time to figure that out tonight? Because you guys worked on this for quite some time.
Any member of council has the right and the obligation, if you know appropriate, to amend any ordinance in front of the body. There's been a motion and a second. That is appropriate. In my opinion, it does not defeat the nature of the ordinance, it does make two changes to the ordinance.
That's what my concern is.
But as to the Gatsby issue, it does not affect that, in my opinion.
Does it affect it either being...
Hold on, hold on. Be recognized by the chair if you want to speak, okay? Let's keep this thing from being a circus tonight. I want to move it along. Mr. Kuzick?
And if I can just say the reason for this is, I believe that, you know, as part of our budget, just like you would do with your family, you want a certain minimum floor that you have in emergency funds. And I don't think it's too much to ask, to require that 5% at a minimum be set aside as part of this, well, it used to be committed, but now it's unassigned fund balance. So I think that what we do is, we essentially remove the requirement that there be a financial stabilization fund as part of our budget process, and I think that it potentially weakens our financial position sometime in the future.
Well, I strongly disagree with your assessment of that. I believe we spent a lot of time working on this to make sure it was compliant with the Home Rule Charter, and any budgeting or statement of revenues, the statement of revenues comes from the executive, but anything that has to be, if we're tipping into the revenues, that means we need a tax increase, okay? If we go below five, which everybody knows, and we ultimately approve the budget every year. So I think your changing of the words at the last minute after we spent an hour and a half in Mr. Heckman's meeting, discussing everything and passing it unanimously, I am not going to support your amendment, and as you knew, but, and I employ everybody else to not support the amendment and pass this as written after we've spent a month writing it. Mr. Heckman?
Since I was brought up. Yeah, the committee did have a lengthy discussion yesterday, and the majority of the committee recommended that this come, well, we all said it should come up for a vote, but we recommended that, the majority recommended that it be approved. You may be wondering why you got a piece of history tonight. I had Linda give you these ordinance, number 181 from 1991, and it wasn't just a history, little history tweak, but my name happens to be there with a few other people that you may know, and Gordon Heller was county council president at that time. But anyway, the reason this was, this was for an ordinance providing for the prudent administration of public funds in the county of Northampton. Now, why we put this forward at the time was, one of the big campaign issues in 1989 was the fact that the Human Services Department ran a deficit. They basically spent more than they had in their budget. And as of October, the then council got news from the administration that, hey, we're sorry, but we don't have enough money to pay the bills. It created, let's just say, a big buzz, and the whole idea of who's watching, money where. So this was done so that every month, the bottom line on this was, every month, we would get a report from the Director of Fiscal Affairs, letting us know what's going on as far as our budget went, where we were, anticipated expenses. In the event the county executive becomes aware that a program's expenditures are exceeding the amount of funds appropriated by Northampton County Council, he shall immediately notify the president of Northampton County Council of that fact. Now, this was passed at that time. Honestly, I think years ago, we stopped even following this. I doubt if we've had a county executives given a report, and that's not about Mr. McCord, I don't, it's probably not happened since maybe five years after this was done. And my point with this was, any ordinance we have, anything council does, is only as good as our willingness and ability to follow up and enforce it. And when this was passed, we felt there was great reason to do it. And I think I expressed this at the meeting yesterday. I understand where Mr. Kuzick's coming from, I really do, but again, county council, our job is to watch the money. I mean, if we're being told what's going on monthly, and he's, it's, there's no equivocation, it says he's got to tell us if there's a problem he sees or may see, we already have that power. I, it's an ordinance on us, and I just, I guess I don't understand wanting to, I didn't understand the original one. I'm in favor of this amended, not the amended, but the ordinance that we had on the table tonight, so I won't be supporting the amendment, because honest, my case, I don't think we need it.
Are there any other discussions on the amendment? Thank you, Mr. Heckman. See, Ms. Laurie Fargo-Hefner?
May I go? I don't have a problem with the first option, but I didn't consider the second, and I just wonder if it changes the spirit in any way of what we intended originally. Because to me, honestly, in number two, in 5.2, striking the word "suggested" doesn't seem to be a horrible thing, it doesn't seem to change. Like, but I don't, I don't know how I feel about number four, and so I guess I want to hear from somebody who knows, is it gonna really change the meaning?
I think it changes the meaning, personally. I think it goes, runs contrary to the Home Rule Charter to do that. I don't know what Mr. Fedoni takes on it, but I'm like, again, not supporting this amendment.
Can I ask, Chris, give us his idea of "shall" and "should," and that might help?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's gonna be a long...
"Shall" in the law is mandatory.
Yes.
"Should" is not.
Yes.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Fargo?
It sure does.
Okay, are there any other que, Ms. Rinsky?
Really quick. So when you say "shall" as opposed to "should," does that, one, undermine the Home Rule Charter or make this illegal like we had discussed yesterday?
My job is to direct you under the law, and I will always, as I have for 40-some years, stay out of the political discussions. That's for, that's for you to determine. My job is to tell you that the amendment as offered has the word "shall," which could be mandatory, and the word "should" is not. What you determine in your legislative decision is for you as a councilperson. I would be loath to tell anybody how to vote. I don't do that.
I'm not asking you to tell me how to vote, I'm asking, I'm just asking if it undermines the discussion that we had yesterday in terms of how we said that the previous code were, they were guidelines that we were following, but they were not legal, and they also undermined the Home Rule Charter.
I have heard that, yes. But my comment is, is that I...
I'm gonna stick with the way that I decided that I was gonna vote, as it, as it stands, not as it's amended then.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McGee?
Yeah, I probably would have, may have considered an amendment to it, but we did have a large, a long discussion yesterday, the other day, the day before yesterday, and I agree with you on that.
Feels like yesterday.
Because, you know, we do wanna, we do wanna work together with everyone here, but the last minute thing, it spooked me on the amendment, so I'm gonna be supporting the original version.
Is there any more discussion on the amendment that's put forth in front of council? Can we call for the vote? On the amendment?
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
No.
Mr. Warner?
No.
Ms. Rinsky?
No.
Mr. Heckman?
No.
Mr. Kraft?
No.
And Mr. McGee?
No.
Failed by a vote of two to six.
Thank you. The amendment failed. Is there any other discussion on this piece of legislation before we call for the vote? Seeing none? Call for the vote, please.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
No.
And Mr. Dietz?
No.
Passes by a vote of six to two.
Right, is there any other old business to come in front of county council tonight? Thank you. New business, number one, introduction of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance by Northampton County Council, Concurring with the Upper Mount Bethel Township and the Bangor Area School District in Providing for a Property Tax Exemption for Certain Deteriorated Property" as defined in Ordinance 2017-04 of the Upper Mount Bethel Township pursuant to Act 76 of 1977 of the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania as amended 72 PS 424722. And I would like to have Mr. McGee introduce to the ordinance, please.
Yes, I'd be happy to. The title is "An Ordinance by Northampton County Council, Concurring with the Upper Mount Bethel Township and the Bangor Area School District in Providing for a Property Tax Exemption for Certain Deteriorated Property as Defined in Ordinance 2017-04 of the Upper Mount Bethel Township pursuant to Act 76 of 1977 and the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania as amended."
I don't think you have to read the whole thing, Mom.
We're good?
I think we're good. Are we good?
Okay.
Mr. Fedoni? Thank you. I need a second sponsor for the introduction of that ordinance? Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
No.
I'm thinking of Laurie. Public hearing will debate, a possible vote will be held on the March 15th, 2018 meeting. I'm focusing. Number two, introduction of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Providing for an Amendment to the Northampton County Home Rule Charter Article Four for the Controller of the County of Northampton, Eastern Pennsylvania." I'd like to have Mr. Kuzick introduce the ordinance, please.
Sure, "An Ordinance Providing for an Amendment to the Northampton County Home Rule Charter, Article Four for the Controller of the County of Northampton." The proposed question would be, "Shall the electorate of Northampton County approve a change in the Northampton County Home Rule Charter, Article Four, Controller, so as to provide for the following amendment? During his term in office, the county controller shall devote full time to the office commencing with the controller's term of office, which begins January 2020."
I need a second.
Second.
Mr. Heckman?
Oh, I'm sorry. Makes sense.
Public hearing, debate, a possible vote will be held on the March 15th, 2018 meeting. Number three, introduction of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Providing for Compensation of the Elected Officials of the County of Northampton." Mr. Kuzick, again?
Sure. An ordinance providing for compensation of the elected officials of the County of Northampton, effective January 1, 2022, the county executive of the County of Northampton shall be compensated on a per annum basis in the amount of $95,000. Current salary is 85. Effective January 1, 2020, the members of Northampton County Council shall be compensated on a per annum basis in the amount of $10,500. The president of county council shall receive an additional $500 per annum as compensation for his/her responsibilities as presiding officers. Officer, the current salary is 9,500. Effective January 1, 2020, the county controller of the County of Northampton shall be compensated on a per annum basis in the amount of $75,000, and the current salary is 65,000.
I need a sponsor, a cosponsor? Mr. Dietz? Right, a public hearing, debate and possible vote will be held on the March 15th, 2018 meeting. Next thing I want to, new business is the consideration of a resolution amending number 27-2018. Mr. McGee, could you introduce the resolution, please?
Sure. I first would like to say that there is a correction that had been made to the pay grade of the position that was eliminated. The resolution by the Northampton County Council, that resolution number 27, 2018, shall be amended as indicated hereafter. Sections marked with strikeout have been deleted, and sections marked with bold underline have been added. Number 27, 2018, it is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that one vacant full-time position of farmland preservation resource specialist, pay grade of RU20D, salary $37,991, shall be eliminated in the Department of Administration, Farmland Preservation, effective February 15, 2018. Be it further resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of farmland preservation resource specialist, pay grade RU25D, salary $52,223,000, $52,223, shall be created in the Department of Administration, Farmland Preservation, effective February 15, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. Discussion on this, this was a, we passed this before, and we had an error in the salary amount, and that's why it's here, right?
In the pay grade.
In the pay grade. It was, it was Miss Scribner's error, 20D instead of RU25. So that's, that's the only change, this is already passed. Any other discussion on this?
No.
Seeing none? Call for the vote?
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
And Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Next thing on the agenda is consideration of a resolution requiring, requesting congressional delegation to support federal funding for voting systems. Mr. Kuzick, could you introduce the resolution, please?
Sure. Whereas the Northampton County Office of Elections and Voter Registration has a mission to provide all qualified voters a means of voting that will preserve the integrity of the electoral process, and whereas a goal of the Northampton County Office of Elections and Voter Registration is to maintain existing equipment and review purchases that may be necessary to improve efficiency in election result reporting, or to satisfy federal and state legal requirements, and whereas one of the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania's top priorities for 2018 is to support state and federal resources to address ongoing voting system replacement needs across the Commonwealth, and whereas counties are wholly responsible for selection, purchase and replacement costs of voting equipment for the state's nearly 24,000 voting machines, while most of the voting equipment currently, currently in use in Pennsylvania counties is approaching the end of its useful life and will need to be replaced in the next few years, and whereas assistance from the state and federal government will be necessary to address ongoing voting system replacement needs across all 67 counties, and whereas Governor Tom Wolf recently sent a letter to Pennsylvania's congressional delegation emphasizing the importance of Pennsylvania's election infrastructure, urging Congress to release the remaining $396 million in Help America Vote Act, HAVA, funds for election improvement, and requesting new funding to replace aging voting equipment, which, which would aid counties in meeting their responsibilities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council urges Pennsylvania's delegation to the United States Congress and Senate to appropriate the remaining $396 million in HAVA funds to upgrade voting equipment for election improvements, and to provide new funding to replace aging voting equipment, as assistance from the federal and state government will be necessary for counties to continue to uphold their responsibilities to maintain a fair and accessible voting system for all. You know, some of you may recall that back in 2006, we were forced to get rid of those old lever voting machines, and we had to purchase the computerized ones. Unfortunately, those do not provide a paper trail, and one of the things, and I rarely agree with Governor Wolf, but in this case I do, one of the things that he would like to see is for voting systems to have a paper trail. So if we were ever to replace the system that we have, it would require a system with a, with a paper trail. And it's very expensive, and there is still federal money that has not been appropriated, so it's my hope that it is appropriated, and should the need arise, that we, we have that funding available to replace our system when the time comes.
And I agree with you. Our machines, however, can have a paper trail added to them. When we purchased them, we made sure of that. Remember, we had to replace the electronic machines that they said... And I agree with you. Our machines, however, can have a paper trail added to them. When we purchased them, we made sure of that. Remember, we had to replace the electronic machines that they said we had to get that then they said weren't good enough, and we had to replace them again, the first time, the touchscreen ones. So we can do a paper trail. It is expensive, so it would be nice if they would help us out. Any other discussion on this? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Kraft.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Serinski.
Yes.
And Mr. Deetz.
Yes.
And Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Any other new business to come in front of county council tonight?
Yeah.
Mr. Deetz.
Yeah, so for the, the next meeting, council meeting, on the request that we put on the agenda, the untabling of the debt ordinance that I put together at the end, towards the end of last year, about the, the county not taking on debt for, for private entities, that we had tabled to get some verbiage clarified by then, our solicitor then, to make sure it didn't encumber the nonprofits and that, that came in and used us as the vehicle for them to get.
Well, you can make that motion, try to untable that. That would be fine. Put it on the agenda. Any other, old bus, new business?
New business? Mr. President, earlier this evening, we heard from the Delaware Canal Authority, and I'd like to make a motion to recommend that the county executive and councils, solicitors, and whomever is necessary to begin the process, that would research the feasibility of a bi-county Delaware Canal Authority.
And that having a sunshine clause in it.
And that'd have a sunshine clause.
Sunset.
Sunset, sunshine, whatever, and I, I second that. I'll, I'll co-sponsor that. Pardon me? Solar power. I need a vote on that motion.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Kraft.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Serinski.
Yes.
Mr. Deetz.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
And Ms. Vargo Heffner.
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Any other new business? Seeing none, I'd like to have someone make a motion to enter into an executive session to discuss a matter of litigation.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
We just voice vote or vote vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Eyes have it, nine to one. Let the record show that we've gone into executive session at nineteen oh two. Mr. Attorney?
Make it short.
How about Carrie?
You're not making an impression as the president.
What?
You're not making an impression on the president.
Where's Carrie?
He thinks I'm Lori. Oh, yeah, yeah, I see how that works.
I'm gonna call you Ken from there.
It's county council.
Hey, this is Carrie.
We're at the end of the meeting, and they just went into executive session. The Gadsby thing passed by six to two. Yeah, discuss litigation.
Okay.
All right.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
I'm gonna stay here and read this word and say. Yeah, so it's not, they just basically took away that it's mandatory to have a minimum in this fund, right?
The whole thing that the last council did to build a reserve fund is now over to be spent like it was before the last council came in. They can now spend the reserve.
Yeah, long one.
Jim Hickey used to go to the roof.
Yeah, you have to teach me that. I think that's lock now.
He pled guilty.
You changed the word shall, should, as the attorney said.
Yeah.
Shall is mandatory, and should is not.
Yeah, that's why I thought, I'm not super familiar with the funds.
I like to deal with you.
Probably.
I talk. I haven't called since I forget.
All these words.
I have, I have called since I was shocked when you called. This is, this is, I'll see you around. I, I mean, eighty percent, yeah. You know, I think, all right, buddy. We didn't hit no buttons today.
Not today.
It gets, it's getting better because. It wasn't me. I'm standing up here, and you guys are looking all concerned. I'm like, do I even duck behind the?
Okay, it doesn't look like there's anything going on there. At least we know it works.
Yeah, I was trying to follow that too.
Yeah, that would be the best. I mean, I, I can't really, I just. Or if you actually like. I don't want somebody to give you five percent. Now, W S, they have a relationship with him. I thought I lost it. There, there was. I think it's a lot. So, yeah. You know. They have a. There's a. I'm about to stop. But if you're. They get more than. Maybe it's that. If you're not that good. Or if you're. Services. Maybe though. Like. The one part of the action that you can learn to. But I'm about to say. Five percent. I'm about to. Like, what's my five percent? If you. Yeah, if you, I, you better really. All right.
So we pick them up. Which is not. I didn't know we were having executive session. Turn the heat on.
Yeah, so be sure.
Yeah, right.
You turn the heat on in there, so it'd be shorter.
Oh, my God, there's nobody here. I have to have them.
Am I allowed to present something?
Uh, not yet. We have to come back on, uh, thing.
No, we're just closing out. If, if we, if we don't, if we don't get through this quick, that's gonna be bad.
Hold on, sit. Tara, did you get it? Tara.
What?
Did you get it?
No, I'm, uh, you mean in my personal email?
I don't know where she sent it. All right, Mr. Spadoni, could you please mark the time we came back off of executive session?
Seven nineteen.
Thank you for the record. Okay. Have to do it. All right. Next thing on the agenda is council committee reports. Are there any council committee reports? No? Mr. Heckman?
Finance committee met yesterday, as was sta, uh, Tuesday, as was stated earlier. The fruits of our labor, we voted on earlier. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heckman. Any other council committee reports? Council liaise reports. Ms. Lori Vargo Heffner.
See, I got it right this time. I attended the jail advisory board the other day, and two things I think that are noteworthy is relating to the question Mr. Deetz asked earlier, there was a little discussion about health concerns with the inmates, and, you know, somebody said the word flu, and they all went like this, but realizing that their flu risk is absolutely, is actually pretty low, because they're not really out and exposed to it. It's more like if somebody went out, so it'd be more an issue at, say, a West Easton, where they're going out to work than in the actual jail itself. So they did discuss that, and they also said that most of the health issues there, if they do have to go out for any medical concerns, would be more like chronic health issues. So that's, that's what I got from that point, and I did also ask questions about West Easton based on the person that came in the other night, and they were pretty good about explaining to me what the different sentencing delineations are and the type of person that would be remanded to work release, and most of those are either DUI, child support, domestic relations kinds of cases where they have to go out, and so they're, honestly, their risk of flight is fairly low, and they gave some statistics about that. The only thing they also said is that if there's a domestic violence situation, that that's a civil case and not criminal, and so there's some. ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven,